Lane on each side of sixty-six.
Next one.
Does he want to put that back in?
Oh, I asked him the other day and he said no.
And I don't think there's any sidewalk even in front of the sheriff's department or the mental health. They don't, the city doesn't have any public sidewalk.
Right.
So you might want to look at that. And then, you know, I say here while shared driveways or connected parking lots are highly desirable, they can't be required by the township. You don't control your roads. It's either county road commission or MDOT that has jurisdiction over every road in the township. So when it comes to site plan review, you can encourage, you can negotiate, you can request that an applicant have a shared driveway, but that takes the adjoining property owner to agree to it and agree to an easement and all of that. It's not something that you can just automatically acquire. On page twenty-six, quote is, "Consider requests and zoning for industrial land uses in order to provide economic opportunity for township residents and to increase the township's tax base." That goes back to what I said earlier. If you want industry, then we really should identify a location on the map or in lieu of that, at least identify criteria in the plan that you could apply to any potential location. But ideally, it should be based on a location on the map. And I think something as near to Stanton as possible would make sense. Again, the highway access would be better. It's just a matter of whether utilities would be available. You know, for some industries, as you pointed out, onsite systems may be sufficient. And it's sort of self-regulating. You're not going to get a GM plant in here with a septic tank and well system.
I was kind of thinking of the zoning districts that are like an M-one or an M-two regarding, you know, the industrial uses that are of certain magnitude. And then to your point here, relooking at the general business, is there some, you know, maybe it's a neighborhood business or anything. It's by the lakes to service large people and, you know, maybe they're seasonal, maybe they're not, versus what would be adjacent to Stanton. But I think there's a, there's a lot of industrial regs, right? That kind of break those down that people are used to seeing.
Yeah.
M-one, M-two, I-one, I-two in a density component, so.
An M-two or an I-two is typically heavy industry.
Yeah, so I think that those go out, right. To your point, and right now our industrial doesn't designate between the two.
Right.
Okay.
So, and, you know, you bring up a good point because if, if we do make changes to the master plan, then the next step is to also change the zoning ordinance. But they're two different things.
Do we have to have, we don't have to have an industrial.
You, you, well, the zoning act says you can't exclude a legitimate use of land unless there's no demonstrated need for it and there's no suitable location. And that's where I think if, if you reach the conclusion that you don't want industrial, then the master plan has to be very specific about why there's no suitable location for it in this township.
Well, I think the other ordinance is, you know, the pushback has told us that there are quite a number of our people who state this is only an agricultural residential area. They don't want any kind of industrial from what I understand. So I don't think that would be any different than any other thing we've been debating, you know?
Right. Well, it.
There really isn't a place for it.
There can be agricultural-based industry, you know, processing plants, for example, things like that. But again, without utilities, it's unlikely.
We don't really have a suitable.
Right.
Okay.
Then under, what was it? Under recreation policies on page twenty-six, several policies are listed regarding acquiring land and planning trails. Has any progress been made towards doing any of these things? Are they still relevant? Also note that policy number two proposes requiring open space as part of new residential developments. You don't have the authority to do that. If somebody came in with a conventional subdivision or site condominium, which is essentially a subdivision, but it's, it's done under condominium law instead of the Land Division Act. If it meets the zoning requirements or minimum lot size and width and whatever other standards we have in the ordinance, you have to approve it. It's not an option. And you can't require that they provide open space. Now, if we have a planned unit development district in the ordinance and somebody chooses to come in and request rezoning to PUD and do a single-family development under that, then that's a different ballgame. Because the ordinance specifically requires that in a PUD, a certain percentage of the land be set aside for dedicated open space.
I think there's something in the zoning district that seems to me that somebody at one point contemplated doing a PUD on the north side of Clifford Lake. And it was kind of like, if you're going to do that, then we want you to be able to provide picnic areas and do a bunch of other things. It was years ago.
Under PUD, you've got a lot more latitude.
But I think if you read some of the restrictions in the Clifford Lake portion specifically in our zoning district, it looks like they tried to write some components in there to capture that and it might not be the right place. So I think that the master plan might have been trying to anticipate that and then there's some wonky stuff.
The wording is kind of broad. You don't have that authority over any type of residential development. It's just very limited.
Right.
The other exception is what's called the open, open space preservation development. The zoning law that was changed in two thousand and six specifically provides at the developer's option, not yours, that they can cluster the number of units that they'd otherwise be allowed to have on a given parcel and cluster them on smaller lots than what the zoning would require, provided that what they gain is allocated as open space. And that's rarely, my, my experience, that's been used very rarely, but that would be another exception. Then under page twenty-seven, compliance with court decisions. The ordinance, the, excuse me, the plan. The plan lists six specific amendments. I'm just wondering how many other than the WEX amendment have actually been undertaken. So that's something you'd want to look at. How much follow-through has been on those recommendations? Then page twenty-eight, under ag rural estate. I, I, I know that in the zoning ordinance, the ag rural residential district requires ten acres for agricultural buildings, but it's one acre for a single-family homes. Again, it depends on how serious the township is about ag preservation. But one acre lots isn't going to do it. Now, the courts have invalidated some ordinances where communities have required very large parcels, like ten, twenty acres for a single-family home in an ag district. But they've upheld five acres, I think ten acres. So again, it's more of a zoning issue, but I think you need to think about the commitment to saving ag land. And like I say, if somebody owns forty acres and you allow homes on one-acre lots, after you take out streets, assuming it's a nice rectangular, square-shaped parcel, typically the rule of thumb is you, seventy-five to eighty percent of the land would be developable after you take out streets and light it away. So forty acres, that might be thirty home sites on one-acre lots. That's not ag preservation.
Paul, with being in the ag district, some of these larger derries now, they'll go in and put a thousand cows or fifty hundred cows on eighty acres. They'll buy all their clodies and everything. Now, does the township have any authority to regulate that? Or is that going under the K code and the state regulates it?
Yeah, and that would be a zoning thing we'd want to look at. But under the Right to Fire Act, township's ability to control that kind of thing is fairly limited as long as they comply with the gaps.
I think right now we just have a minimum to have livestock in the zoning. Like, you can't, can't have cows and horses if you have less than an acre. I believe this was in Arizona's district right now.
Okay, then on page twenty-nine, low-density residential. I guess this is just a question. If no areas in the township contain public water or sewer, a minimum twelve thousand square foot lot seems completely unsustainable. This should be adjusted in the plan and zoning ordinance. Do we have any, other than around the lake? I assume a lot of those lots are pretty small. But elsewhere in the township, do we have anything as small as twelve thousand square feet?
Probably a quarter of an acre.
Down there on Lake Stanton where they've got those duplexes. Theirs duplexes are there. But we, that we approved twenty-five years ago, a plan years ago.
They may have been before zoning.
All the zoning with there.
It was zoning.
We did, we did, um, experience or something like that.
I'm surprised they helped.
I'm not sure how big those lots are though. I know there's duplexes back there.
They're decent sized. It's been a long, couple of years since I've been back there, but I mean, they're not like shoved right together.
There's quite a lot. They had rounds.
Yeah. They're, each one's got to be, I don't know how far back it goes behind them. I would say at least a half acre.
I, I think some of that low ground was even included in it.
Oh, so that helps to.
Yeah, I think there's. I don't remember now, but I think there was plenty of land there.
Yeah, yeah, it's a large.
That's been a long time ago.
I was trying to think how long ago.
Page thirty, make residential plan recommends increasing the lake residential requirement from five thousand square feet to twelve thousand. Again, is that sufficient for onsite utilities? Typically, in most of my experience, health departments require an acre of land. But that depends on soil conditions and some other things. You want to look at that.
I'm sure there's a lot of places that are far less than an acre.
I can't doubt, especially around the lakes.
Well, everywhere. I don't think that's, if you head, if you head to your, your house and you're heading your setbacks from your sides and you have room enough to get your septic in there, so many feet away from your well, I don't think.
Yeah, if the health department approves it, then that's fine.
So we should check with the health department to find out what.
Yeah, yeah.
So on the lake residential, because I know you made a bunch of comments on the map. When we were going through the last ordinance, right? We captured all of these lakes now have been memorialized. Do we need to be looking at the lake residential districts around Catherine and all the other lakes that have been coming up as a protected as we review this map?
Yeah, I, I think the zoning map includes the major ones. I don't think.
I don't think Catherine was on there and I don't think.
Yeah, I don't think it includes all the little lakes, ponds.
Correct.
So that, you know, again, that's sort of something that should be addressed in the plan and then ultimately in the zoning ordinance. Okay, page thirty is medium density residential. These are the future land use designations. The plan recommends revising the MDR zoning district. Has this been done? Ag uses, the, the current MDR zoning district allows agriculture. And that just seems out of place. You know, you've got an ag rural residential district. That's where the ag should be. But if you're going to allow multifamily or mobile home parks in an area, that should be for that kind of development and not for agriculture. So again, both the plan and the ordinance may have to reconsider that. Page thirty-one, the neighborhood and general business. Again, as I said earlier, really think about whether you need two commercial districts in this community and where commercials should be planned and zoning.
Now, over by Clifford Lake, east of Clifford Lake there, there's getting to be quite a bit of business built up there on five twenty-two. I don't believe that's commercial business, just break down through there.
We did those individual, well, Tri-Lakes and.
Right.
Riffy Stewart's and.
The lawn care.
Yeah, yeah. Those were done individually.
What do you mean individually?
They came and asked for.
Variants or rezoning?
They asked to be rezoned.
Okay.
But, but it was, what do you, what do you call that? I don't remember what it was called. Non, non, non-conforming residential is what they are.
I don't.
And we gave them.
Rezone to commercial.
Right, but they were non-conforming residential.
I don't think we did. Not the, not the lawn care ones. He never come in front of here, in front of us.
I think that's by neighborhood business.
Is it Dave?
Because you can't give up use there, you know, that, right? A state won't allow it.
We did something for Tri-Lakes, I remember that.
We did, but I don't, and Stewart's we might have, but I don't.
And we, I know we did Stewart's because they had all that Smith stuff on there.
Right, but the, the lawn care one, we never did anything. Did you get anything from that, Dave? The lawn, the lawn care business, did they?
That's neighborhood business district.
So they applied for permit.
Oh, the permit, yeah, that's true. That and it fell into the category of neighborhood business.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
And if it wasn't there, you couldn't have done it because you can't give a use variance.
Because.
Or by the, knowing enabling that, even if there's, it wasn't used before two thousand and six, I believe. And none of the townships I deal with have done that, so nobody can do that. You know, it's state law or whatever.
Okay, well, again, the, the commercial thing is something to consider. Page thirty-two is the industrial classification. Again, the big question is, you want to allow for industry and if so, let's put something in the map for it. And then pages thirty-four and thirty-five is the implementation section. There are ten recommendations listed, all related to zoning ordinance amendments, which if any of these has been completed, are they still appropriate recommendations?
Any comments or questions for Paul on what we just reviewed?
I don't have a clean, I don't have a clean copy of the map to really be able to even read what's on it. The map is really fuzzy.
Get to the back of the book.
Okay. I don't have that book.
We were given a diff.
We've only given the zoning book. So when I go online to try to find anything that's really.
The, the online version doesn't have the maps.
I don't have that.
There is a map, but it's black and white and you can't read half of it.
We don't have that.
You're supposed to have that.
Check with Rhonda and see if she has.
We're going to have to get that, that's all we were given.
Nice.
Okay.
This early, well, the last six months, there was numerous articles in the Daily News brought about by the population in our area specifically, Ionia and Monaco County, because of its proximity with Lansing and Grand Rapids and the fact that people can remote and work from home, you know, that, that there's going to have to become more availability as far as building. That was, I don't know, it was a series in the Daily News, I don't know. Four or five articles on that.
Right now, that's what you're in, so. This is what, what the new one would be, right, with your recommendations?
No, that's existing.
Okay. So right now, our ag and I always look at it as rural estates. It's one acre. LDR is twelve thousand lot size. Lake is five. The multifamily is twelve. Neighborhood business is three quarters of an acre, three thousand, thirty thousand. General business is an acre. Industrial is basically two acres, it's eighty-seven twenty. And FR is, what's the definition for FR?
It's.
What?
It's what?
Or, that's Flat River.
Oh, the Flat River is an acre.
And there are some footnotes in the ordinance that I, I didn't put all of those in there, but in the MDR district, there are some different requirements for multifamily and, and mobile home parks.
So are we able to do certain things that at the ag would stay in place and then do an overlay district? Let me look at this.
Overlay for what?
So agricultural could stay there, but at the master plan, if we said, for instance, that that's, you know, we've got farmland that butts up to M-sixty-six. We've got farmland that currently butts up to five twenty-two, let's say. Are we able to keep that ag and then do an overlay district so that if they wanted to do industrial, it could then go only in that location? Or if they wanted to sell it and it stayed agricultural, that would stay there?
Yeah. If you, using industrial as an example, if you designated an area industrial on the future land use map in the master plan, you wouldn't have to rezonate right away. It could stay as ag or however it's being used now. But by designating it on the future land use map, if an applicant came and said, "I want to do a small tool and die shop and I want to rezonate industrial," you could point to the map and say, "Well, that's where the industrial has to go and submit a request for industrial rezoning and we'll review it."
Okay.
So you wouldn't need an, an overlay for that.
I think we did that with the trailer parks. Did we, because you put, you had that on your property, did you?
Because they wanted three areas.
Yes, yeah.
Larry did.
And you did, Keith. Yep, and you did.
Yeah.
Well, and I think it's on Keith just because the Stanton trailer park and all of that is right. It boils up to him.
Dave, for some reason Larry said.
We needed three spots.
Okay.
For, so that's what we did.
So should we do that with the map? Well, should we do that with the map and the industrial? Paul, designated area along sixty-six someplace that that's going to be industrial in the future?
Yeah, I think if, if we can pick a reasonable location, then it should be on the map.
And then because of infrastructure, we could limit those industrial uses to late industrial versus heavy industrial.
Yeah.
And we can get away with that because we don't have the infrastructure to support the other. Okay.
The only place longer is pretty large.
Right.
It's only, it comes out there, I think.
Sixty-six.
Well, then you've got West of Town Two on five twenty-two. Past the Road Commission up by Catterage, you've got that stretch.
Yeah, but the sewer.
It would run downhill.
A lot of stuff runs downhill.
It would run downhill there if they did. Okay, right now it stops, you know, there at the city limits. It's all the way over there, they just redid all of that. So.
That would be a horrible place to put industrial.
Any other comments or questions for Paul? I guess my question, Paul, is what do you want from us now? Guidance of where we want to go with this or?
Yeah. It just sounds like from what we're already talking about that some changes may be warranted. So I, I guess what, I mean, I, I can certainly do something like the industrial and update the demographics and that sort of thing. But I, I will need more direction from the planning commission regarding some of the questions I've asked. Are the recommendations still relevant? Are these goals still worth pursuing or have we accomplished anything? Things like that that are more policy-level decisions that have to come from you. I can't take it upon myself to just change the goals without some direction.
Seeing as how that, how many, I've not ever seen the book.
Yeah.
I don't think we're ready to act on this.
No, I, I don't expect it to happen tonight.
So I think we're giving the book.
Is it our next meeting in October? Our next meeting's in October. You would think that we'd be able to go through and if we've got questions to your point, I'm not sure when SOR was passed, that could have been from the last time that plan was done. Like, just trying to update everything you guys have done since we've looked at it. Because you, they haven't touched this for six years now, right? Is that the last review, six years ago? So.
I think we need to have Paul go over the population and the age and the demographics of the township.
Yep, that's available.
The traffic, I don't think the traffic's changed a whole lot.
I doubt it.
But I think the Road Commission's got new counts, by the way.
Okay, Paul, we check on that?
No.
Yeah. I think they have new counts just because of all the improvements they've been doing down Grove Road, McBarry Road. They usually have to do all of that when they submit for the funding, so they may have updated it.
I would expect in the last six years, they've updated the counts.
They have the counts.
Do they?
Yeah.
Existing land use. Just going on that.
The existing land use, I think we need to, we have two different zones, right? We have an AG and we have an RE, but on the map, they're all the same color. And then so much of it's grandfathered in, I'm not sure which is which. For him to even be able to delineate on the map.
You mean grandfathered, yeah.
When we go to do this, we could come back that it's RE and everyone's going to say, "No, I'm AG." Because there's a difference between the ag exemption, right, and the underlying zoning, so.
Don't confuse zoning with.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, okay.
All I, all I was saying about the exist. All I, all I was saying about the existing land use map is it, it paints the wrong picture of this community. There isn't that much yellow across that mustache.
Right.
Well, um, we got a couple of things for you to look over and, and, uh, change the map and get an industrial area for, um, if that ever comes in for the future. Uh, the rest of us, in the meanwhile, if we have questions, we're gonna forward them to you, and you can start doing some homework, and October, we can review things a little more.
Yeah, I think if, if you go through my comments on this, uh, these pages, that'll give you some direction of things to look at, at a comment.
And if anybody on the, on the commission here asks questions, Paul, you guys, you know, forward them to me, and then I can forward them out to all.
I think, um, you can, we can also, the fire and safety one, you know, that one has, it's Belvedere and Day and Stanton, so that one's done.
Do we wanna put on the map what districts cover what part of the township? Because Belvedere only covers Lake, um, Lake Moncom and up in that area.
I think it would be helpful. So, do we wanna take the map with your zoning map, but then do a little dash line for what's covered by Bel- Belvedere? Do a dash line for what's covered by Day?
Or a separate, even a separate map.
And do one for Stanton?
Yeah, I think a separate map would be.
Fire, fire protection. You know which town, which, you got the township or town does. Like I said, though, I think Belvedere just covers up the, I don't even think they come down to our place, like, they just go over to Lake Moncom, like, Day comes up to our place, and then I think Stanton takes, like, five twenty-two north, like that.
They take over about Hillis Road.
And Day, I think that's where Day does, yeah.
Well, I'm north of Hillis Road, and if I call Day, they tell me they don't do it, and if I call Stanton, they tell me I don't do it, so.
So, you get the guard one, though?
So, yeah, so.
Um, and then, on the, uh, page twenty about the private sewer, clean that language up, or we'll have to figure out about that a little bit.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments from Paul?
I think the number twenty-three regarding the sidewalks, there isn't any existing sidewalks in the city that they would be tying into, so, you can probably clean that one up.